Thank you to everyone who is here. This is the Legislative Breakfast hosted by the Provo Municipal Council. Welcome all in attendance and welcome anyone watching this on the video that will be posted later on. And it is 7:13 on Thursday, January 10th. We are meeting in Hyatt Place Hotel in Provo. And we will begin with a roll call. Bryce?
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
George Hamblin.
George Stewart.
Adam Robertson.
Mark Thurston.
David Harding.
Kay Van Dieren.
Elizabeth Vanderwerken.
Dave Sewell.
Dave Tagg.
Wayne Parker.
Isaac Paxman.
Karen Tebaldi.
So all of our senators and representatives who cover any part of Provo were invited. We're very grateful for Representative Robertson and Representative Thurston. It's just sitting in front of the camera, so we'll wrap you up. Grateful that you were able to make it. We heard back from several others that they weren't able to make it. But we're grateful for those who were. We would like to open with some city discussion items, items that we want to make sure that are -- yes, thank you. Our legislators are aware of, and then we are hopeful to hear any items that you think that the city should be aware of and tracking as the legislative session begins. To begin, we would like to have a prayer that Representative Thurston has agreed to offer us. I'll kind of time together.
Our Father in Heaven, we're indeed grateful this morning to be here together as elected officials and as employees and public servants. We're thankful for the opportunity we have to make our communities a better place. We're thankful for the blessings that we have of wonderful people around us who are willing to serve and to help and to contribute. We're thankful also for the opportunity we have to participate in a democratic process and to be able to represent those who live in our areas and who are constituents. We're thankful this morning also for the breakfast that's been provided, and we ask you to help us to always remember that there are others who need our help and to be able to serve them and to be able to provide for their needs when they are not able. We ask you to bless us today to help us to have our minds focused on the needs of our community, to have the ability to work together in quality spirits and be able to meet those needs and to create an improvement for those who live around us. These things we pray for in Jesus Christ do come.
Thank you. We welcome Representative Judkins. A seat for you out in front of the center.
Sorry to be late.
We appreciate you. Appreciate your attendance. So there are five city discussion items. We want to roll through them fairly quickly, about five minutes apiece. And we'll take the time to Mr. Van Dieren to introduce the first one.
One of the things that Provo's been looking at for probably a number of years now is our wastewater treatment facility. And as we've tried to meet the standards required at the state federal levels, we've come to the point of having to build a new facility and trying to get the funding for that. We've gone through some different paths, and we're still looking to close some gaps. So I'd like to have a little discussion about that today as we're together as legislators.
Now, Mr. Parker, my understanding is that the city has been working with the State Department of Water Quality, Division of Water Quality, applied for a loan, and we're very grateful for that state program that is going to help us meet the state requirements. Fortunately, there is a limited amount of money there, and it had to be divided across a couple applicants. So is there anything other things you wanted to mention on that?
No, we appreciate that. I think as EPA and DEQ standards change, it's going to be more and more difficult to come up with state funding to do the low-interest loans and those sorts of things to try to make this work. So the state's fund is largely now depleted for about the next five years. And so only a very small applicant that might come in would probably be able to get funding. And our wastewater treatment loan is actually phased in over about a six-year period. And so we've got to very carefully work to time our improvements so that they match up with the flow of state funds. We were able to secure a one-half percent loan, which is really helpful. But again, there's still about a $50 million gap between our need and the state financing. And so we're trying to figure out whether, how much of that we can do on a pay-as-you-go basis, if we can just time our rate decreases and things to sort of match up with the state loan, or if we have to go out for more conventional financing for that gap. But I think the challenge for us was that the corpus of the fund had just been so depleted that it was not possible for us to get the same level of funding for the scale of the plant that we need that matches what others have been able to do. And so I know DEQ will be back to talk about options to replenish the corpus of the fund, and that may give us an opportunity to secure additional financing through the state, but we're not holding our breath on that one. But we are, you know, we just want you to know that as the standards change and as, you know, phosphorus and nutrients and pharmaceuticals become key measures, old treatment plants just do not have the technology to be able to do that. And so we're going to see a run on those funds over the next number of years as those various new standards come into place. So again, we're supporting those. We recognize that water quality standards are changing, particularly in our watershed that serves Utah Lake. We want to make sure that what we're putting into the lake is better than what's there and improving the quality of the lake, not degrading it. So again, I think that's sort of the bottom line in terms of legislative action is looking for opportunities to replenish those low-interest loan funds that will help us and other cities meet those needs.
Thank you. Yeah, our takeaway is we're grateful that the program is there and just giving you feedback that we have found that program to be a very valuable plan. A couple of years ago, when we had a conversation about this issue, there was some thought that DEQ was being unreasonable in their requirements and that that was driving up the cost.
Yep, we still think that.
Okay.
But we don't see much of an avenue for change there. So we've kind of just accepted the path.
That's what I was observing here.
That's why, that's what it is.
It was just like, well, we've given up. We're going to have to do this, whether it makes sense to do it or not. And yeah. But we hear that.
I guess not.
So yeah, just a quick recap for you. There's apparently still a significant disagreement about it, but the Division of Water Quality came in and said, what you cities are doing is not acceptable, and you have to do better, which I think, okay, there's some directional belief there. But they wanted the cities to move so far that it basically required you had to replace all of your infrastructure, and all you had to replace, you had to replace it with something that's just going to be way outside your ability to afford it, and there's just no option to not do that, which is kind of where we are today because you're still living with something you can't afford.
That's right.
So the other day, we had a presentation about how we need to make sure we're planning for growth, you know, golden growth, and how important water would be to growth. And I pointed out to the presenter, I think water is going to be the minor issue. The cost of getting the water is going to be far eclipsed by the cost of getting rid of the water. And not just the sewer, but now they're coming back and saying that any rainfall, any stormwater has to be collected and treated and retained and percolated, and so there's added expense there. And so water is going to be expensive, but the minor expense might be actually getting it.
This is the 90th percentile storm runoff?
Yeah, that's the next item on the list, which is MS4 standards related to storm water. So we'll talk about that.
And this ties back to the Utah Lake issues as well.
Yes, it does.
DWI, Division of Water Quality is really concerned about Utah Lake, and I think that's fair. But there are like 100 things that make Utah Lake a problem, and water quality is basically picking one or two.
Yes.
Which, in the absence of everything else, probably won't make any difference. But they're going to require this massive amount of effort in these one or two areas, which at the end of the day, I was convinced that it's not going to matter.
Yeah.
We're spending hundreds of dollars.
What's your basis for that?
From when we had the presentation, they came in and said, like, there's this one area which maybe does need to be addressed, but there are all of these other things which can't be addressed because there's the geography and there's the current content and all this sort of stuff.
The chemical makeup of the lake.
Chemical makeup of the lake and all of those sorts of things. So even if we did all of this, it's not going to make Utah Lake a significantly better place. So we're just going to spend.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is how do you, on what basis are you coming to that conclusion that it won't make a difference? Because that's not what I've heard.
That was the presentation that they were done at the legislature.
There's a significant difference of opinion on various scientists who looked at this. So Dr. Merrick, for example, at BYU says there's enough naturally occurring phosphorus in the lake that you could stop and put not one drop of effluent or runoff into the lake, and you'd still have algal blooms, just because the lake is, has its own naturally production of phosphorus. And again, there are scientists who disagree with Dr. Merrick, and there's sort of equal weight on both sides. No one's quite sure what the right answer is. But I think we do know, for example, that the major share of phosphorus flowing into the lake is not coming out of treatment plants. It's coming in runoff off of farmers' fields and people's yards, and so stormwater in some fashion is probably the worst contributor to the degradation of Utah Lake. And so again, when we talk about these MS4 standards, that's, it's really about trying to protect the quality of our waterways in Utah. That's a very difficult one. It's hard to regulate what happens because there are, particularly from agricultural uses, there are thousands of access points to the lake. And it's not like you can collect all of that and treat it before it goes into the lake.
So the net result of the presentation that we had at the legislature was that water quality is going to regulate the things they can regulate.
Yeah.
But they can only regulate a very small set of things. And so there's this outstanding question about, well, if we regulate only the things we can regulate, is it actually going to make any difference? Is it, you know, because there are all of these things we really can regulate and we can't address with hand control that maybe makes this one thing not really that as helpful as you would think it should be. That was the presentation.
And I think, and there are some standards that are outside of DWQ's control that are coming down the pipe from EPA. Yeah, they're good things, they're just very expensive things to try to resolve.
But it sounds like we've kind of moved on beyond that debate because we're.
I think we have from our standpoint of trying to make sure we have upgraded our treatment plant and doing what's necessary to meet not only current standards, but things we think are in the 20-year time horizon.
Yeah.
So yeah.
So at the end of the day is, that's not the discussion anymore. The discussion now is how to pay for this.
That's, yeah, that's kind of.
We're not going to sit around and grasp about whether we should have to do it or not. We're doing it, and the question is how do we pay for it?
I think that's the conclusion we've come to.
And so just to make sure we have enough time to talk about the legislators' concerns, we're going to move on. But Wayne, if you could just kind of segue into MS4.
Quickly, so as we've talked about, stormwater is now an issue that DEQ wants to try to tackle. And so there are some EPA standards, and DEQ has actually come out with a higher level standard than what EPA is requiring, and we have some concern about that. This 90th percentile, you know, collecting the water from the 90th percentile storm when EPA's recommendation is the 85th percentile storm, actually, there's a really big gap. Doesn't sound like much to go from 85 to 90, but it's 20% more rain that falls in the 90th percentile storm than in the 5th percentile storm. And so the storage facilities that would be required in new developments in the city are substantially greater than they would be. And that's going to put a pretty significant strain on the development community as well as the city. As we're talking about housing affordability, this is not something that lends itself to housing affordability. It's a lot more ground that has to be consumed by retention facilities as opposed to be able to be developed into homes. And so we have, we have some concerns about that. The other concern we have is that DEQ has indicated a willingness to work on a case-by-case basis to look at potentially changing the 90th percentile, 85th percentile based on other retention facilities around. The concern we have is that that requires a set-up by a consultant, basically calculate those numbers for every new development that might come in. So if either homes wants to come in and build a development, we, you know, and they obviously would not want to do a 90th percentile storm, then we're finding ourselves in the position of having to staff up or consult up or do things that would significantly increase our costs of regulating development. And so again, we're just anxious. We've actually given you a little handout that kind of goes through some of the technical aspects and makes some recommendations about how we might look at MS4 permits in the state that would try to resolve this issue. So again, we'll continue to work with the Water Quality Board and Eric Gaddis and Division of Water Quality on this issue, but we did want you to be aware that we had some concerns about DWQ doing substantially more higher level of requirement than what EPA is recommending.
Any other comments on this item? For myself, you know, I think the, it reminds me of the previous item, but I think this is the correct direction we're heading. I think that it can actually help our public works as things are designed so that they don't have to collect and route a lot of stormwater. A lot of it's handled on the project, and so it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't need to be collected. Some of it is just perhaps in the implementation. We're looking for some flexibility in order to use what works. And when Dr. Gaddis came in to speak with us, it did sound like, you know, they're open for collaboration and whatnot, and the requirements were being delayed, so additional things can be worked out or whatever. So it seems like they want to work with us and work with other cities. So I think a lot of it is just, we want to make sure that when, when we actually are held to the regulations, that they make sense for everyone. Mr. President.
So we have a little bit of right hand, left hand going on. One hand is saying, you need to clean up your act and spend all this money, and on the other hand is saying, you need to provide affordable housing.
I understand your pain.
Yeah. They still have this all the time.
But it sounds like there's nothing unique from legislators per se that the proper water quality is working well at this point.
Yeah.
All right, we will move to the next item. A clip to fuel discuss. The governor proposed his budget. There's some very interesting things that in it that we would like to discuss maybe from the Provo perspective. There are three things that we saw in there in the governor's budget that are of interest. $50 million to improve water infrastructure, including $20 million for municipal industrial water efficiency, really what that is for metering programs. We just, when we first put it on there, we didn't realize it was specific to metering programs. And I don't know, Wayne, do we have any need for more metering money at this point?
No, the metering really is around secondary water. That's the requirement. We don't have a secondary water system.
Okay. So but we like the idea that there is a little more money put into the budget to try and help cities and towns and counties with those issues. If there's any way to put more money, as we talked about, for wastewater, things like that, we'd love to be able to try to access that. We mentioned the $17 million for affordable housing, just noting that the housing advocates in the state are asking for 20, and so they'll be coming back to you, and I think the cities will, like ours, will support that. We were working on affordable housing issues, and we've looked at it. We've got about 60, 61% of affordable housing in the county. The city's still committed to trying to provide some, but we'd love to see more help for the housing programs that are seeking it. So putting the 20 million that the advocates are asking would be great. Another one that we saw in there was that putting 30, the governor's recommending 30 million for open space in significant community parks. Now, in there it's not fine, but he talks about $25 million in matching grants for regionally significant community parks, and then ties them to Fisher brand use connection with TOVs and housing affordability. I can't remember the cost, Wayne, but the city is looking at a sizable regional sports park on the west side, and whatever help you can help us with to get funding for, some funding for that would be very much appreciated by the residents and by the council. So the only reason I mention these is that these are issues that we saw funded, and if you can help us get some of that funding and support those programs, that would be wonderful. When it comes to affordable housing, what would be some examples of things that you would use additional funding to afford affordable housing? Community, I know that the Provo Housing Authority is looking at trying to create a community land trust, trying to help us with those programs. He's some of the, there are programs in the city and elsewhere that are a little upside down because of the way the housing market went years ago. Dave Connects probably more expert on that information than I am, but the, there's a need, and one of the things that we brought into as we're looking at is, you may have seen the Housing Coalition, Housing Gap Coalition from the Salt Lake Chamber that was trying to get cities to sign on to a resolution. Well, the city's considering that resolution, at least the menu of it and using it. One of the things that calls for in there is for cities to try and change, say, impact fees or things like that. Now, the city is wrestling with being able to fund its growth infrastructure, if you will, with impact fees, and yet we're hearing from affordable housing advocates and even from the industry that without some kind of support from the cities, they're not as inclined to put money into those programs. And so I just think that the more support financially that you can help us with some of these costs, the better off the housing programs go.
So is Provo looking to put more affordable housing in? Or you said that you got 60, you have 61% of what's in the county.
Well, I did. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if the community land trust is funded and it's moving forward, it actually helps the rest of the county be more involved so that we're not, we're not bearing the disproportionate amount of responsibility. I mean, I don't, I don't know. Anyway, I don't know if you want to add.
Well, you're right. It's not a Provo land trust, it's a Utah County land trust. So whatever goes into that can be used anywhere where it's doing most advantageous, and if there are communities that really don't have any affordable housing, they would certainly be hot on the list of getting some.
One thing I think that clouds this conversation is there are seemingly many definitions of affordable housing. I was reading one just because of the resolution that we're considering from the, from the chamber, Salt Lake Chamber, and they just said their definition, the definition I was reading was affordable housing is housing that is affordable to, basically to 100% AMI. So basically, you know, half the population would be housing, if they, or if housing is affordable, would be in affordable housing. And so it's somewhat difficult to have these conversations with affordable housing instead of.
Subsidized housing.
Subsidized housing.
Affordable.
But I think overall, we are very concerned with the affordability of our housing for people, you know, almost across the entire spectrum. And I think what Provo is looking for is how do we provide housing across the spectrum that's affordable to people? And how do we do that well? How do we, how do we create these communities for the people who we want to be in the community? Our store clerks, our firefighters, our teachers, how do we provide, how do we make sure that the people that want to be, that are a part of our community have housing that's affordable, but is also creates great communities, continues our great community? So we want to do it effectively and really do it well. I think it's an issue up and down the income scale because even right now, the price of the housing real estate has shifted up, and that's top to bottom. It's all the way up, which means that even for people like middle-income people, that the type of housing that they would be able to get for the amount of money that they would have paid five years ago is significantly smaller or less desirable in some other way. And that's just, that's just the overall market is up right now. There is this question then, well, so is that, is that the affordable housing question or is the affordable housing question that I just can't find a place? I think there's, there are parts of the state where you say, given my salary and what we can budget for a house, we simply can't find a place because we've got to look, and there's just nothing in the market that's available. There's a difference between, what you described is housing affordability, but affordable housing is defined as percentages of the average moderate income, average income in a, in a community. And yeah, very much what you're describing is affecting, I've seen that with my kids looking for homes, that they can't afford the new stuff. Or even, yeah, whether they're looking to buy up to first-time home buyers, or you're looking at student couples looking for a place to rent. There's that. But we're talking about lower-income folks trying to find reasonable housing for their needs, and the city's already providing, or the community of Provo has already has about 60% of that, and we just want to see more support for affordable housing. All right, these are all very big topics. We're just, we're just letting you know that these are, these are areas that we have to consider some for, for opportunities. So turn the time over to Isaac. I'm asking to introduce, if I could, really quickly. On the last one, we talked about regionals, regionally significant parks, significant community parks. There's kind of a plan on the drawing board, kind of collaboration between the city and the county for a recreational beach, kind of a state park, but very much a beach kind of on Utah Lake. You know, it's kind of a high dream because there's no funding for it, but if the governor's proposing some of that money, that might be an opportunity to kind of fund something that is just kind of waiting for someone. All right, Isaac.
Yeah, and you know, to listen to this conversation, you might get the impression that we're just, you know, asking for money a lot. We don't think we've asked for a lot of, you know, just special appropriations. You know, Provo City hasn't come very often to say, can you legislators work something into the budget directly for us? One that we may come to you on at some point would be to help us get a new terminal at the airport. If any of you would like and haven't done so before, or even if you have done so before, come tour the airport, just to stand in that airport lookout tower with 360 views all around you and see that Lake Bemolion, the view, it's, it's worth your time. And feel free to reach out to me, and I can help that out. I would love to go with you. But the next step for that airport really is a terminal. You know, the airports like to fly at certain times of the day, and we only can process one flight really at a time. And so that's the logjam. We could get more flights, no problem. We could probably get 20 flights, you know, and service a good number of cities the way that comparable, you know, airports to our size and cities to our size do, that is the terminal we need. And we've got an application for a federal grant in. We're not sure how that'll go. We're hoping it'll go. We're going to try to work other ways through the, you know, state administration and so forth. But, you know, in the next while, we could just come to you and say, can you, can you on the legislative side, help us? And it's our understanding that St. George got a good shot in the arm from the legislature for their airport. And we think this is, this is, you know, the airport is already sort of been designated as our regional airport through different federal grants to get the airport lookout tower and other things. We are this region's airport. We certainly see ourselves that way, and we want to be able to provide that. able to provide that additional service in time. So know that it's not at this moment that we're really asking you to press hard for that, but I think that, that's, that could become.
Isaac, if I can help with that, let me know. I work professionally with the FAA pretty closely, headquartered regularly on other issues and I'm on the transportation committee here in Utah because of my aviation background, so I'm happy to help with that.
That does need to be, somehow we've got to get that on the radar. It might not hurt to recruit the support of the county commission as well because that, that really helps the three of us because when you bring in the rest of the county delegation saying, hey, this is a county priority, so you've got Representative Gibson, Majority Leader, Representative Peterson's in leadership, Representative Moss is the appropriations vice chair, and so if we can bring in a broader coalition to say, this is priority. In fact, it was last year when we had our growth retreat of Utah County Group, I think this, I think the airport was identified as, it was either the first or second in terms of key ingredients for addressing growth. It does, it does a lot because if you can bring in more traffic, both passenger and cargo traffic, Provo wants it to Salt Lake, that reduces the burden on freeways, it, it does a lot of things. And if we're going to be, if we're going to be the largest county 50 years from now, we ought to have an airport that will handle that population.
Thank you. So we talk about how many vehicles we take off the road with front lawn, but the same thing with the airport, every flight we take off from here to the Salt Lake is going to take a certain number of cars off.
Absolutely. It's just, it is, it's a priority and it's got, we've got to catch up because that's, and you think about other metropolitan areas that have grown up and sort of expanded, a lot of them have more than one airport. So you have Phoenix Mesa and, you know, obviously LA and New York and San Francisco, Oakland and Chicago, like the list goes on. As, as cities grow up, you can't have just one gigantic international airport, you need that regional airport to relieve some of the burden and also to spread things out a little bit so you're not concentrated as much.
And maybe I just let you know that the airport director is going to come to our work session next, on the 22nd, and give us an update on the airport planning and things like that. We invite you, you're welcome to come, sit down and watch that meeting.
Division of Aironomics, Jared Gusselman?
It's, uh.
No, CD Gleason. It's the airport director.
Oh, Provo City, yeah.
But if, but if any of the legislators do have other suggestions for us, that's part of what we're looking, because we, we've never really quite done this, you know, and so we appreciate these types of suggestions and we'll, we'll be in touch.
I know the director of Division of Aeronautics very well, working closely with it. It's useful to have him come down, sure, him down here, he's very, very aware of that, he's pretty aware.
Okay, we are running a little short on time, so I'll try to do this quickly, but diplomatically, I'll just quote the governor, what he said, that when it comes to elections, Provo, our Utah County seems to be the epicenter of dysfunction. We were still on that ground in Salt Lake County, we would love to get it back. Let's do, we have, city leaders have met with Ms. Powers, who was recently elected as our county clerk or so, and I have to say that from that meeting, it leaves the impression that God is that we will be giving that comeback. She seems to be very capable and excited to fix the problems that we have. So in talking with her, what her plans are, how to address that, she has some specific plans, but like everything else, you know, she's looking for ways to fund those fixes and so we just wanted to bring that up on the radar. If there's, and I don't think Utah County is the only one that faces this challenge through the legislature, just know that there is a problem there and any funding that is available will help address those issues.
So is the city planning on having the county conduct the election next fall?
It's yet an open question. I think our intent would be to do that, it just seems a lot more efficient to, you know, having every city do their own thing, but, but I think we want to feel a confidence level that we're not going to have problems like we have recently.
Yeah. We've, we've offered in the past, because we have some sort of hit for individuals, we've offered to assist and I believe those offers previously have been turned down in our, and again, this is a very preliminary, you know, introduction to Ms. Powers, but she seemed grateful for that kind of collaboration and hopeful for that kind of collaboration. And so I think that, again, we, we need to, we'll need to see a lot more, but early indications are that those issues should be resolved and I think we would like to go with the county if that's possible.
She knows what the issues are and she knows what the solutions are, the questions, is she going to have the resources she needs to?
That's exactly it. She, she says, you know, she's gone to county commission looking for some money, she's gone to the city governor's office, looking for some money. They have some, you know, some help teams, they have some standards. One of the things that will help, I mean, having more help from the city clerks and city reporters is going to be helpful because they have some experience and collaboration will help with that. But at the end of the day, it still comes down in, in much of the cases to the technology they're using and it got outdated and different equipment than most of the state. So she's kind of, she, I don't know if she's reached out to you each individual yet, but if you be aware of those issues, this is one where we're asking to help them because it helps all of the county, cities.
It's Amelia Powers.
Yes.
Amelia Powers.
Oh, yeah.
We have that though. I'd like that. Amanda, it sounds good, but.
It was, it was late last night, I was cutting that down.
Amanda is the city's recorder. I think that's where, I think that's where the mix-up came from. Yeah. Amelia Powers, thank you. So with that, we'd like to turn really the rest of the time over to discussing your concerns. What can we do to help you, you know, can, how can we lobby or what are, what are some things that you think we should be concerned about and pay attention to as the session starts? I'll just give you a quick recap. We had our all-day caucus two days ago, whenever that was. And so I would say, my take out of that is that there are three big issues that at least the House Republicans are going to be paying a lot of attention to. I don't know how much you care about each of them, but Medicaid expansion, Prop 3 passed and now we have to figure out how to implement it in a smart way that doesn't break our budget. So that's, that's going to take a lot of energy and enthusiasm of the legislators, so watch for that one. I think what you should look for out of that is that there will be some form of Medicaid expansion, but it will be re, they will cover all, everybody who would have been covered by Prop 3 will still get covered, but it will be done in a way that's a little more fiscal and responsible. There's, there are some things that can be, should be done to kind of make sure that we're not busting our budget down the road. Second one, tax reform, the governor's talking a lot about that one. I think it's fair to say that the House Republicans are enthusiastic about tax reform, but we have a different thought about how to approach that than the governor's proposal. So that it'll be interesting. But as you all have figured out, you can't just keep raising the rates on the same thing. That, that won't work, that eventually can't work. So you've got to figure out a way of spreading that tax burden across more things. And the idea is broaden the base, lower the rate, you'll hear that over and over and over again, that's, that's sort of like the, and so we're, we're looking at what that means, you know, from our context. It almost certainly means extending the sales tax to additional services that previously have not been subject to sales tax, which is going to cause some people some amount of heartburn and grief, but that's why we get paid millions of dollars a year to be politicians. So that's, that's coming down the pipe. And I think the third one is going to be budget, the budget issues. It's, it's a, it's a crazy year because we have a record budget surplus and of course everybody would love to spend all of that money, but it's not actually going to be a smart thing for us to spend all of that money because we are looking forward thinking that there's going to be an economic downturn sooner rather than later. And two problems with spending all the money, especially if you commit to ongoing programs, that's just going to make the downturn worse. The other one is, is that we need to make sure that we're putting enough money aside in sort of preventive measures so that that downturn is flattened. So putting money into rainy day funds and paying off debt or funding things with one-time money instead of with bonding, those, those will be taking up a significant amount of the budget, the budget surpluses. So I think a lot of people are thinking this is going to be the Santa Claus year and they might be disappointed because the legislative appetite is going to be more of, let's not spend at all. In fact, I think there are some people who would say, let's spend very little of the surplus, let's, we have an opportunity now to do some other things that will make this a pending downturn. So those were the big three that I noticed.
Norm, I don't speak for the council, but thank goodness we have you there in our new, our candidate legislators because the downturn's coming.
Yeah.
And play Santa Claus because we have a budget surplus would be a big mistake. I mean, the city has been, we try to be very fiscally conservative, we build our fund balance up every year. Energy fund is built up, so take it.
Yeah, and that's the, so there's this sort of principle in public finance that almost nobody talks about, which is at the end of the day, what do you want to do? You want, you don't, we really don't care about easing the burden on government, what we want is we want to ease the burden of downturns on our citizens. And so what you don't, the last thing you want to do is, is raise taxes during an economic downturn. So like, well, we have revenue shortages, so we have no choice but to raise the rates on everything. So you're raising your income tax rates, your sales tax rates, all of this stuff, just exactly at the worst possible time. You want to do the opposite. You want to be able to say, well, we're going to raise the rates a little bit at good times and then lower the rates during bad times, which is hard for government because that's just the opposite of what your needs are. But the way you solve that is as you, as you fill up your funds, you get your rainy day funds topped up, eat up your, your reserves, ready to go, so that when those downturns can be said, look, we're not raising rates and in fact, we may be able to even cut rates a little bit with the downturn to kind of provide some.
We'd love you to help us with our projects, but not at the cost of this responsibility.
Yeah.
That's, that's a balancing act that's difficult.
Yeah.
At the same time, at least you certainly have my support.
Well, this is, this is going to be an interesting, an interesting budget discussion here, so.
Well, it appears that the vast majority of, over half of the, far more, far more than half of the rainy day funds in the state system right now are education funds, not general funds.
Yeah, and so we do have to set aside money for transportation projects, we're going to, because there's going to be need for those during economic downturns, we've got to forward fund those. We did last, during this special session, we actually did something that most people didn't even, I don't think we even reported on it. We were going to fund some of the prison with, with bonds. We used a significant amount of the surplus to pay for those projects with cash, which keeps that bonding ability in reserve. So that was, that was a significant thing to happen in about three minutes and no one reported on it. But it was there, it was, it was, that's part of our philosophy, is to reduce our debt, wherever we can pay, pay as we go, set aside money for rainy day funds for both education and for, there's now a Medicaid general rainy day fund because Medicaid has the same problem as when you have the economic downturn, the number of people who are not qualified for Medicaid goes up, the amount of services goes up, and that's just exactly the time when we have less revenue, so you have to fund, forward fund those programs as well. Those are, so those are the kind of the big things, I don't know if you want us to talk about specific things, Dave, that we're looking at?
Just, yeah, more just if there's anything that you think we should be aware of, I've heard, you know, some like food trucks are going to be in issue again.
Short-term rentals.
Short-term rentals, that is, that is something that the city is, we've kind of had our head buried in the sand for a little bit and I think we're, we're starting to realize, okay, now is probably the time to address it. Any other?
I'm trying to think of the ones that I, that are working out. I don't think I have anything that specifically impacts the city this year, I almost always have in the past, but not this year.
Yeah, the tendency, the tendency, it seems to be a tension year after year where legislature sometimes wants to step into the realm of local government and force things from above and of course ULCT and the city's resistance, so we just ask you to pay attention to that.
Yeah. The one is, is the one great issue about trampoline park safety, which doesn't, what I'm proposing really wouldn't impact Provo because you're already there, it will impact the rest of the state who's not already there, but you look at that one, so.
I'm not sure what you can do about it, but I'd like to express my concern that recently we had a quarter cent sales tax imposed on us by the county, two county commissions, two out of three. So I, people view that as capsation without representation and when you have a king, you have one ruler, in the halleys, you have one veteran, you have two, and someone like the city of government spread out so that it's not just three county commissions.
Yeah, I think when we look at it, that we don't need legislative action to do that, it's just got to be, it's just got to happen at the local level up, so.
Yeah. I fully agree that the county formal government has to change where it's not acceptable. The county is big enough, you have block growth coming and it actually has to change.
But that's, that's kind of up to the citizens of the county to figure that out, so you won't get, you won't get a fight from me if people change that.
You got cheerleader.
Yeah. So, so we talked about ULCT, they represent, you know, every municipality across the, across the state and all the two are smaller than Provo. And so they have to, you know, they have to balance what they're talking about. I think for the, the larger ones, Provo included, when we talk about housing affordability, affordable housing, subsidized housing, we talk about homelessness, which I think are all really interconnected. I think sometimes ULCT is, is representing kind of the broad view. I think some of the, the interests of the larger cities, again, Provo included, feels like we've already been doing a major part of addressing these issues and some of the other cities have been happy to let others take care of it and really haven't felt a need or any incentive to, to address the issues. They've been happy to, you know, there's going to be a portion of the population, of every population that needs some of these services and they've been happy to ship the people they generate off to other cities to take care of that and so the service centers. Yeah, and so, so while we will say, well, hey, we want cities to be, you know, to have full autonomy to address this, however, there, there, I feel like there does need to be some coordination there and, you know, I think it's important to set it up properly so that cities have the flexibility to address that, but there's, I think there does need to be some carrots and stick to make sure that everyone is doing, doing their part. I think last year it shifted around a lot, but we were assessed a certain amount to help fund homeless services and it was population-based up to a certain cap and we were the largest one, we had the largest settlement of the cap and, and none of that returned to Provo even though we are a service center, we don't necessarily have homeless shelters yet, we have a lot of these services, so we have the full impact and then we get assessed to help other cities that are, that are doing kind of what we're doing.
So, yeah, those are, yeah, those are, those all end up being bad deals for Provo too. Yeah, feel, feel free to be very visible and vocal on those things, on those issues. Just so you know, Salt Lake City is not shy, they, they are often up there.
In force.
In force, yeah. I know it's, it's a hike, because they're just right down the street, they can just run back and forth, but if there's something that's, that is a big issue for you, you know, don't, don't be shy about, about showing up and making a fuss because you know your other friends will, so you might as well.
Isn't Provo the second largest city in the? Isn't Provo the second largest city in the state?
Third.
Behind West Valley?
And West, West Valley, I don't know. Is it really city?
I was gonna say.
That's Ron Bigelow.
Yeah, and Ron's up there quite often. He's, he's around, but he's a veteran of the Capitol and he loves being there. But yeah, they, West, yeah. But Salt Lake City has, they just have a lot of people who are there on a lot of issues. City attorney issues and lots of other things, so.
I do have a question about the homeless part, because, you know, I've heard for different areas, it's not the assessment that comes up to fund homeless shelter programs in Salt Lake. But it seems odd to me that there's not, there's, there's not any kind of overnight homeless services here. I mean, we are a big place, and if we had that, then we wouldn't be having to send those assessments up to Salt Lake.
Um, I don't know who's the best. I mean, there's, there's a lot of services that are.
Well, I know what the services are, but there's, I've tried to help homeless people and there's no shelter. There's, I mean, there's the transit bishop that can help for a night or two, or there's this, there's that, that, there's, you know, waiting lists that's nine months long, or whatever, but there's not that shelter.
Which we make a good point, though. Provo got absolutely no credit for the massive amount of community support from the nonprofits. And I suspect if you add that, what, the community of Provo more than just municipal corporation, Provo should not have had that much burden, because we spent a lot of time and money through our volunteer organizations. We got no credit for that.
I think there's, I think there's a very good argument to be made that, that because of those kinds of services, both ecclesiastical and community nonprofit, that we do a better job of almost anyone preventing homelessness. I don't know how many rent checks bishops are writing around this community that are keeping people in housing that otherwise would be homeless. And so I think there is, there is an element that kind of frustrates us, that we don't get a lot of credit for the work that's being done to prevent people from being homeless. As you probably know, the Food and Care Coalition is getting ready to break ground, they're just like a million dollars away from their fundraising goal, which I think they will hit shortly, to add 72 transitional housing units. You know, which, again, don't, doesn't really address necessarily the chronic homeless issue, but it does address those who are finding themselves homeless. You know, this is the family that had a child in NICU and now has a, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars in medical expenses and they can't afford to pay that and the rent. And so, again, I think, I think we're doing some things. Part of our frustration has been what's the definition of homeless services? You know, and right now, our 180 or 90,000 dollars that we're sending to the state or is being withheld from our sales tax allocation is funding the net effect of two and a half police officers in South Salt Lake. And we totally get the need for that. Part of our frustration is, though, that when the, the sort of leaf blowing effect of Rio Grande happened, you know, we've got four more homeless camps now than we ever had before. You know, we're providing far more services than we ever had before, and we're sending money to Salt Lake County to meet those needs. And that's been a bit of a frustration for us.
And Wayne, I think, I don't know what the demographics are, but I mean, the Latter Day Saint community is only taking care of Latter Day Saint candidates who are on the verge of homelessness.
Yes.
And at least in my wife's experience in volunteering in the volunteer care clinic, you know, the vast majority of people who are in need of that service, which I would assume are also people who are vulnerable to becoming homeless, are not in the Latter Day Saint community.
That's, no, that's correct. And I, I don't, I don't need to say they're taking care of all the needs. But I think they are preventing a fair amount of homelessness.
Right. By the membership, you know, because it's, it's kind of, it's a composite, you actually have places that are affordable, so people can get in them, they can get community support to stay in them from churches and charities. And so if you didn't have that stock of affordable housing to start with, they wouldn't stay in the community. They would just, so you're, people are coming here, they're staying here, they're being taken care of here. We're not perfect, but we're not getting credit for all of the effort that we're doing by far.
Not just credit, we're being debited.
Debited.
To help others.
Help others who aren't doing it, correct?
Yeah. One of the, you know, as wonderful as mass transit has been, the frontliner and so on, it also is a little bit of a pipeline for transients to find their way to Provo. And so, again, we do struggle a little bit with that. We've tried to work with UTA police to ensure that people who are on the train are paying their way there and not just picking up a free ride. And so, so again, we're, you know, it's been a wonderful thing for the community, but it brings a little bit of a dark side to it, so. So we're continuing to kind of work through those issues and, but trying to do it in as self-sustaining a way as we can. We're not looking to the state to come in and help us with money on those issues.
Do you think there's a need for homeless shelter?
Well, there's, you know, I, I think there's certainly a need to meet, that there's, there's a, well, let me just back up a minute. You know, I, I think I would argue that homelessness is not modelific. There are all kinds of reasons. And there, and there's a sizable portion of our community that we know that don't, for whom homelessness is a lifestyle choice. And whether that's mental illness, or substance abuse, or whatever it is, but they don't want to be in a, in a facility, they don't want to have expectations of them. So you kind of have that subset. And those will always be with us. And no matter what you do with sheltering, that you're still gonna have that homeless population. And I think, again, sheltering done right, I think we would be pretty positive about. But again, and I think the Food and Care Coalition is a pretty good model. You know, there's, there's a requirement for job training and for, you know, those kinds of things that are, you know, that are built in to try to get people out of homelessness. What I think we want to avoid doing is warehousing homeless. And so, again, it's a, it's a delicate balancing act and, and it's trying to find, again, what's the specific need of the specific patron? Because I think if we treat them all as just the homeless, that's gonna be a problem. The more specific we can be, the better.
That's definitely what I saw in visiting the facilities, on our tours of the facilities. You got, you got everything. You got people who just lost their job and ran out of savings and got evicted, but as soon as they find a job, they'll be right back. Then you got people who have serious long-term problems that they, they're gonna never really survive their rental universe, it's just not gonna work for them.
It's a very tough issue.
So Representative Judkins, I try to understand some of this, and I guess perhaps I don't understand all of the presentations that we received, but if you'd like to take a look, I guess I, I was more under, I was under the impression that through a lot of the Food and Care Coalition specifically, but community action as well, and then some of, you know, what's that mental health? I, I was under the impression that those services, you know, while it's not necessarily a homeless shelter, that the people that are homeless have avenues. And so if you're a, you know, a nine-month wait or whatnot, I'm just wondering, my perception seems to be different than yours, so.
I just, I just know my perception is that it's true to help.
Yeah.
They'll try to find a place to stay and there's nowhere for them to go.
So I would love to maybe sit down with you, maybe we can, we can talk to some of the service providers and say, okay, in this situation, what are the resources available? What could, you know, and look and see if we do have holes.
Yeah, I would love to do that.
You know, the Continuum of Care Group, which is kind of the county-wide effort to bring all the service providers together, and we, we send Jim Miguel, who's our fire chief, is kind of our local representative to that group. And, and I, I think there's some substantial work going on that will get there, so. So again, I would just encourage, if that's of interest to you, the Continuum of Care is probably the best place to start with that.
Can we, just, just a couple days ago, we had a presentation from our housing authority, and we've recently, or they've recently, her, a long-term lease of a motel, and it's now kind of a wraparound care, which is the model that they're using on that. And again, I mean, perhaps there is a nine-month wait to get in there, but that's, that's actually housing some of the, as we've talked about, some of the most difficult to house. And, I mean, so, so there are significant efforts that are taking place, but I'd love to get a better.
And it's been, I think, like, it was about a year ago, and it was two years ago.
Yeah, I'd, I'd love to learn as well, because, yeah, perhaps there are some gaps that.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, one other item that probably will have some effect on the city, I'd like to put on, those issues, it's a, it has to do with government enterprise. It's a government enterprise amendment, and would require cities such as Provo, when you're providing recreational or entertainment venues, to do a market study. So this is a question of, is our cities and municipalities replacing what could be better served by private enterprise? So it's a market study, do a notification, here's, here's the potential impact, a public meeting, just to make sure it's really out in the open, that we're gonna provide something that could be done privately. So Gulf Coast would be a great example. And that, that's, it's very much in the public eye. So that, that's something that I'm wanting that we'll publicly see.
Does your bill aim to close down city stuff, or just new stuff?
No, there's nothing to do with what's already there, it's for new things. And it's just, hey, make sure that you've talked to the public, the public knows, and so that it's very, very transparent, that if there is something that's been done by a municipality that could be done by private, that's how we open.
Program-specific or?
It's entertainment and recreation is the base word.
Okay. Does that, does recreation include all parks, or what?
I don't think the base word includes parks.
Private sector doesn't apply parks to all.
Well, yeah, but I'm not saying any sort of amenity that the city provides that is recreational has to have a study of market.
I'll read the wording, but it was not intended to include parks, so I'm not sure it doesn't include parks.
When I was, when I was working with the privatization board, the, this was an area that we'd get complaints on a lot of times from some of the private companies. And I think the market study would be an interesting one, because we didn't do any, but the perception was that despite what the goal, back then it was Gold's gyms and Rob's complaining.
Right.
But the perception was that you were dealing with two very different markets. The people would go to, for example, I'd go to, I'd go to a Vasa gym several times a week, and the people that tend to go to the, to the private gyms are, are looking for a very different experience than what local recreational center uses.
I think the point is, if the city said, yeah, wouldn't it be a great idea if the city had a paintball place where kids could shoot each other with paintballs up? You know, you didn't say, okay, well, let's take a look at that one. Is that why is that not being provided already, or is it being provided already by the private sector? And are we unfairly competing and trying to take an opportunity away from them that they, that they could do? But if there's something that the community needs, that the private sector's not well anywhere able to provide, that's what the city should be doing.
Does the legislation provide some kind of distinction on the decision, or is it just you want to have a more transparent process period?
It's more about being public and open, so people know. It's, it's not so much restrictive, it's just making sure it's very clear and that it's been analyzed, and that the analysis is, is part of what has to be presented to the public. So then the public go, oh, yeah, there really is a need for something, a Vasa versus, say, a public facility, we have here a beautiful facility that, and if they're providing to a different community, and it wouldn't be served, then it gets that out there.
Okay. Because I know, and the other thing is, I would say proximity, you'd want to consider that.
Market study.
Yeah, I know when the state parks were opening up, ziplining up at the Deer Creek Reservoir, the fellow that owns the facility down here.
By the river.
By the river was complaining that he, that that was gonna cut into his business. And I'm thinking, and I was telling him at the time, that you're miles apart.
Different market.
And I don't know how you connect the connection.
I think that's, it's just kind of, it's, it's important that, that the government always take into account, like, here are, here are things that the community needs and wants. Are we getting in the way of them being provided without us having to collect tax money to do it? So, you know, that's, I've, I've heard people say, I was actually telling some, telling somebody when we were on vacation about swimming pools, and they said, so if you want to go swimming, where would you go? Like, I'd go to the rec center. And it's like, why don't you go to the private swimming pool? And I was like, what are you talking about? There are no, there are no private exercise swimming pools in the city of Provo. The closest one I even think, that I'm not even sure they have one, would be there's a, what used to be a Gold's Gym up in North Orem. I don't even know if they have a swimming pool.
They do, but it's, but again, like, so the Vasa I go to, they have a swimming pool, but it's really just for laps.
Yeah, just a lap.
Entertainment there and it's small.
Yeah, so if I were gonna go do lap swimming, I wouldn't go, I wouldn't drive all the way to North Orem to go to the lap pool, I would just go here. But, and apparently where they're from, there are just hundreds of lap pools, and they're all private, and you pay your, you have thirty, forty, fifty dollars a month to do it, and there are no municipals, so you know, it's just a different approach.
Is there, is there any, I guess my concern would be if it pushes back in the other direction, where it puts pressure on the city not to do something, because there's the assumption that there might be some private enterprise that would take care of it, and private enterprise never happens. Or that there's a distinction between, going back to the example of a rec center, you know, what it is that, it may, it may actually be the same clientele. I mean, I think there's probably an argument to be made, that the rec center has taken customers away from Vasa, but it's also provided something for the city that we wouldn't have otherwise, right? There's this community center, there's a community feeling to it that's very different from going to any sort of private place, and that it's in the city's interest to create that outlook space. I guess that's my concern.
Right.
That I think those things are really valuable for cities. I mean, I can understand, I like the idea of the transparency, I just, I'm just a little unclear as to whether or not that ends up creating so much hesitancy on the part of the city to do something that could be a great service.
Yeah, yeah. I think it does, it does cause cities to take pause, right? To, should private industry do this? Is there existing facilities? That, that pause should be taken, that should be part of the operative process about deciding. And it doesn't prevent the cities from doing anything, it's more transparency openness. But I bring it up because I'd love to have your input, take a look at it, what calls it like the parks, we'll go back and check on that, for example, make sure that's, that's not.
Yeah, well, but then it, but there are parks, and there are parks, right? So you've got tennis courts. Tennis courts would be a park, but that's something that, that private, right? So, I mean, yeah, you don't want to just say, well, if we could call it a park, it's out.
Well, the regional sports park.
Regional sports park, yeah.
Isn't ambiguous.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Depends, it depends on what it ends up having in it. There aren't, they're probably, I can't imagine that if you did a market study, that anybody's gonna be willing to provide soccer fields in the private sector. I just don't know how that would happen.
Yeah, baseball parks, that's pretty tough.
Pretty tough for.
Private. It's numbered, it's out there, it's Phil 59, just got numbered yesterday, so.
The only thing I'd suggest maybe, I think out of most of our, before we do a major facility like this, we always do what we call feasibility study. If the, if the privatization analysis could be a subset of the feasibility study, it would save us a ton of money. As opposed to going and finding another consultant to do something separate. So if there was provision in there that, if a feasibility study includes the privatization component, that, that checks the box for the, for the legislation, that, that would be super helpful.
I'd expect that would check the box, I'll, I'll make sure it doesn't actually prevent that.
Okay, so you could throw that all into one?
Yeah, put it all into one, then I think it's a relatively small cost component for us. If it's something where we gotta go out and hire a consultant to do, you know, that, that strikes me as kind of an unfundamental mandate, and, so.
So in Provo, if you just take this as a case that, I've been around long enough that once upon a time, there was a Trafalgar. And I remember going there, and it was just awesome in the seventies and eighties, and then it's not even there anymore.
Yeah.
But that became part of a larger private entertainment group that was perhaps mismanaged or had bad luck or whatever. So it's all gone. Seven Peaks is gone, or it's in limbo. So while Seven Peaks was up and running, you could say, well, why have a pool at the rec center? I mean, we got one here. Now we got one pool, and it's the one that the public is maintaining, and the private disappeared.
Yeah.
I think those are the ideas, just that, to make sure that we're having those conversations. Because every once in a while, it doesn't happen often, but every once in a while, somebody say, well, we really need this for our community. And you can hear economic development, right, trying to go find somebody, say, can, this art community really needs this. Can we get you to come and invest and build it and? this, can we get you to come and invest and build it and have that done privately? That's a, that's a win-win, because the community's the service they need, the city doesn't have to have taxpayer money involved, and somebody's investing in the community. But that, like I said, that doesn't happen often, but it does occasionally happen, and it's good to look for those opportunities.
All right, I think we are getting close to the end. Don't think anyone would object if we're a little bit early, but any, any thoughts?
Well, I just, I just thought it'd be of interest, I emailed a colleague of mine at BYU who's working on the phosphorus thing, because I was curious about this, and he said that LeBarre Merrick from BYU, this is Ben Abbott, who's at BYU, has been proposing the hypothesis that there's already enough natural occurring phosphorus in the lake that we don't have to worry. Says he's been proposing this hypothesis for a long time, and he says, but based on my discussions with aquatic scientists from across Utah, BYU, UU, and USU, no one else agrees, they all think the antirogenic nitrogen and phosphorus from the wastewater treatment plants are a major driver of the problem that we're facing. And he says, are we sure that reducing nutrient effluent from wastewater treatment plants will solve utrification in Utah Lake? No, but are we sure that it will improve the health of Utah Lake ecosystem? Yes. And then he makes a list of recommendations of restoring a natural hydrological regime, reducing phosphorus and nitrogen flux from the wastewater treatment plants, continuing restoring shore and submerged vegetation. Anyway, there's, they're removing invasive fish, and so there's a variety of strategies that we're, you know, the Utah Lake Commission and others are looking at for including the lake, that I think still make our, I mean, I know it's sort of a moot point, since we're kind of under, under law to do it anyway, but I just, I think that's important to mention, I thought I'd share that.
So, George, just a kind of a counterpoint, I have some people who do fishing and work with these other bodies of water, and they go, what about strawberry and other bodies where there's no sewage treatment plant, but there's still other options? So they don't see the limitations, per se. And then we had a presentation, and they were talking about how much phosphorus has settled out in the bottom of the lake, and how it gets agitated during surge of storms, and then gets put back kind of into the water. But the reason it precipitates out in the first place is because if you have too much of anything in water, it can only saturate so much, and the rest precipitates out. And so if you lower the amount in the water itself, then it tends to just go back into solution from what has already been precipitated out. So I think there is a significant amount that can replace and go back into solution if we happen to reduce the overall concentration just because we're putting in cleaner water. So I think there's a lot to be said, there's not much, but maybe we can do, because those people that make those decisions see a different way, or see a...
Well, all I'm suggesting is that the merits point of view is a minority point of view, and the majority of the scientists would agree that it's worthwhile to do what we're doing. So we can look at it further.
It's a counterpoint both ways.
Yeah, all right, so great conversation, we'll continue it offline, Mr. Sewell.
I just wanted to thank Representative Thurston for sponsoring the legislature for passing what I thought was a really significant piece of legislation on lowering the blood alcohol limit. I know there's a lot of other countries that are already doing that, but I think Utah's gonna end up being the leader there in a movement that's gonna save many lives.
Any other thoughts before we conclude?
I just wanted to, I know George thanked Norm, and I want to thank Norm, but I thought Marcia and Adam ought to be thanked also for your, being on the state legislature, we're grateful to have you, us there representing us all.
And I'm excited to have them. It's, it's, you know, we, now, Marcia's gonna be sitting on my bench, it's gonna be great, we're gonna be just two seats away from each other, but it's been good to have great new people come in, because you always worry about that succession planning, is, you know, what's gonna happen? But I think we're in a position now where Provo city and Utah County generally is gonna be in a position of strength in the legislature. Having great, talented, bright people coming in is definitely part of that. I'm excited about what we've got going forward, and get our senators to pull their weight to the...
All right, unless there's any objections, we will adjourn by unanimous consent.